Further, I was shot. All the way down the shin and all the way up.
Yeah?
Go.
Wow.
Let the record reflect that the meeting is reconvened with all members present. Councilman Forte is absent, excused. For those that are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever living and just as for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion for the executive minutes of March 24th, 2025?
Second.
Okay, these were already discussed, the executive. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome all. I'm honored once again to serve as the acting mayor and chair our first public meeting of September. We note that the second meeting in September will be held on Wednesday, September 24th, later this month. We have some recognitions to do. We have two employees of the month to recognize. For September, we are recognizing construction official Russ Brown and head custodian Lou Amarato. Russ and Lou coordinated the move of the building department to their temporary location in the former Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps building. They worked many additional hours moving office equipment, which included taking apart and reconstructing the staff's workstations. And because of their efforts, building department employees were able to provide their services to residents without interruption. And on that note, I'll mention that preparations are underway here at Hartley Dodge now to begin the highly anticipated renovations of the east wing. So please go directly to the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps building at 29 Prospect Street for building permits or to schedule an inspection. We're also celebrating the anniversary of borough employee Helene Corlett. She is a part-time office assistant in the clerk's office, and she celebrated her 45th anniversary with the borough. Outstanding, thank you, Helene. On September 2nd, Councilwoman Bob Landrigan visited Florence Zukowski to wish her a very happy 100th birthday. Born on September 2nd, 1925, in Venzone Friuli Venezia Giulia in Italy, Florence came to the United States in 1927 and has called Madison home for many years. Congratulations and best wishes for continued health and happiness to Mrs. Zukowski. On Thursday, September 4th, Madison schools opened their doors to students and welcomed them back for the 2025-2026 school year. My son Julian started his first year at the junior school and was amazed by Principal Perron's spirited welcome to the incoming sixth graders with an energetic entrance set to rock music that dazzled the 10 and 11-year-olds. So I want to thank all of our administrators, teachers, and staff for bringing their energy and creativity to engage Madison students for the new school year. Speaking of energy, please drive slowly, obey the speed limit. Madison police will be doing speed enforcement as a reminder to keep our streets safe for all as schools reopen. And personally, as someone who walks and bikes in Madison, I want to remind drivers that a pedestrian's risk of injury escalates drastically as car speed increases. The average risk of severe injury jumps from 25% at 25 miles per hour to 50% at 35 miles per hour. So drivers, please obey the speed limit and keep us all safe. That includes the newly paved Green Village Road, where Madison police will be doing additional traffic enforcement to encourage speeding on that very nice, smooth asphalt. Please obey the posted speed limit and watch out for additional enforcement on Green Village. Last week and over the weekend, Madison families enjoyed the PBA Carnival on Park Avenue, concluding with last night's spectacular fireworks. So congrats and thank you to the PBA for a terrific event. And also this weekend, the Environmental Commission hosted a successful Madison garden tour and native plant sale with the theme of saving nature with your yard. I hope we'll hear more about that great event from Councilman Range with his report tonight. We have some good progress to report on our senior center project. The bid documents have been issued to the four pre-qualified contractors that have significant historic experience for the renovation of the Heller Center building on Main Street, the former Masonic Lodge. There will be a site visit by the contractors on Thursday, and bid submissions are due October 11th. The goal is to complete construction and renovation to reopen the building next year for the 201st anniversary of its construction. It'll be a great thing to offer senior programming to our residents back here in Madison, and we again want to offer many thanks to Martin Heller and his family for their generosity to help us preserve this part of Madison's history. Okay, we have two special proclamations tonight. I'm gonna come down. Does this work?
Right.
Okay, yes, I got it, Ray. Thank you. So we'd like to welcome Lois and Jonathan Sackett, who will accept our ovarian cancer awareness month proclamation on behalf of Rachel Sackett, their daughter and sister, who is a stage-three ovarian cancer survivor. Could you come forward, please? Whereas ovarian cancer is the fifth-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among women in the United States, and an estimated 20,890 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer, and 12,730 will die from the disease nationwide, including an estimated 670 new cases and 340 deaths in New Jersey. And whereas a woman's lifetime risk of being diagnosed with ovarian cancer is approximately 1 in 91, and her lifetime risk of dying from the disease is approximately 1 in 143. Whereas due to vague symptoms and the lack of reliable early detection tests, most women are not diagnosed until stage three or later, when the cancer has already begun to spread. And whereas although the five-year survival rate for stage-one ovarian cancer is over 90%, only 15% of ovarian cancers are diagnosed at this early stage, and the five-year survival rate for late-stage ovarian cancer is below 30%. And whereas while a mammogram can detect breast cancer and a pap smear can detect cervical cancer, there is no reliable early detection test for ovarian cancer. And whereas increased public education about ovarian cancer can help save lives by promoting earlier diagnosis, support access to gynecologic oncology care, and encourage research funding for better detection and treatment options. And whereas this month, the Borough of Madison joins survivors, families, healthcare professionals, advocacy organizations, and all those committed to raising awareness, remembering lives lost and offering hope for a future with better outcomes and ultimately a cure. Now therefore I, Rachel Ehrlich, acting mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. And I encourage all residents to participate in awareness activities, wear teal in support, and engage in conversations that help save lives and support the thousands of families affected by this devastating disease. Thank you, Jonathan, thank you, Lois. Would you like to?
Sure. First of all, Madison, thank you so much. This is our third year being here in a row, and it really means a lot to my family, particularly my sister, who lives in Arizona and happy to be here tonight. Her mission after being diagnosed with ovarian cancer during COVID was to help spread awareness. She caught it in stage three, and also at the same time was also diagnosed with breast cancer as well. So at the same time. And after that, it's become her mission to spread awareness all over the United States. Last year, throughout Arizona, New Jersey, Florida as well, Sacketts and my sister in particular were able to pick up 56 proclamations. This year, we're looking to do close to 70 proclamations, and just really happy that Madison has always been such a big supporter of ovarian cancer awareness month. Myself, as a councilman in Rockaway Township, we actually struggled to support it. I've worked really hard to get our team to do it and have not been successful. So I am constantly working all over the place to get it, as many towns as I can get to, and just so happy and thankful once again. So thank you everyone so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jonathan. Yeah, for sure. I also want to mention Madison has a Turn the Town Teal program going on right now with teal ribbons tied for awareness. So maybe you'll see those ribbons around town and you'll recognize this awareness program. Thank you.
Just a shout-out to my sister. I know she's watching on YouTube right now as we speak. So wherever, I don't know where your streaming is, where is that? In the back? Rachel? Hello?
Tonight, we are also celebrating the 130th anniversary of the First Baptist Church of Madison. We are joined by deaconesses and deacon of the church and members of the church's anniversary committee to accept the proclamation. Will you join me? Whereas in the spring of 1895, a small group of baptized believers who desired a place to assemble and worship met at 10 Central Avenue, known as Odd Fellows Hall, to organize a Baptist mission. And whereas in 1897, the mission became the First Baptist Church of Madison with Reverend R.L. Harris as its first pastor. And whereas, as the church membership grew and a larger place of worship was needed, the church's current location on Cook Avenue was purchased from B. Warren Burnett for $400, and the new church was completed in early 1902. And whereas several other renovations of the church building have taken place to restore the windows and Gothic architecture, and also to add modern lighting and sound. And whereas the First Baptist Church of Madison is a unique, small congregation which is diverse and inclusive. And whereas with the guidance and leadership of senior pastor Reverend Craig Dunn, the church continues to be an integral part of the Madison community. And whereas through their food pantry, school supply distribution, nursing home visits, and holiday meal baskets, the congregation helps locally. And whereas the church is also active with more far-reaching outreach, including the distribution of needed supplies to the homeless and victims of natural disasters like Hurricane Katrina and the Haiti earthquake. Now therefore I, Rachel Ehrlich, acting mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 130th anniversary of the First Baptist Church of Madison. They are role models for living responsibly as Christians in a complex world. Thank you so much.
On behalf of Reverend Dunn, First Baptist Church, our official board, we thank you for this honor. 130 years is a lot of years. And we are so honored and blessed to be in Madison and still thriving the way we are. We're a little church with a big heart. So we invite you anytime, please come by, worship with us. We are celebrating next Saturday at the Madison Community House with a banquet, a luncheon, and some honorees we're gonna be honoring that has made our stay. And just amazing the support that we get from the community. And we're just so happy to be here, and we accept this honor. It's such an honor, and thank you.
You know, one of what Deacon Jackie said, but we're a church where our goal is to be part of the community. We're about community and about service. Some of you may remember us as having the smokehouse at First Baptist Church, but we're also looking to, we're looking to gain souls for Christ. So yeah, we still do the cooking. This is the pitch for Bottle Hill Day. Come up and see us, and we still do the spare ribs and the pulled pork and the fish. But yeah, we're all about, it's about God's work. And to dittle on what Jackie said, we are so grateful that the Borough of Madison has been with us all the way, as far as I go back anyway. I know Lottie can speak further to that, but we're so happy and we're so proud, and we thank you again for the proclamation. I'll just say thank you.
All right, we now move on to reports from committees. I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Landrigan to please kick us off with public safety, and I'll circle back with finance and borough clerk after I take a breather.
All righty, thank you. From the Madison Police Department, "School is now open in Madison. We welcome back all students and families. Madison police want to remind drivers to slow down and watch for school pedestrians." We will be, they will be enforcing with, forcing a zero tolerance in and around school zones, so please drive carefully. Following the paving last week on Green Village Road, Traffic Safety and Patrol Division will be conducting heavy enforcement for speeding violators. All Madison police personnel were trained in and just completed defensive tactics and de-escalation training. This training consisted of a four-hour block of instruction and physical training. This training is mandated by the New Jersey Police Training Commission. The police department took delivery of two new Ford Hybrid interceptors to be used for police vehicles. They are now in the process of being outfitted for commencement of duty. Okay, from the fire department, "For the month of July, the fire department responded to 204 incidents. Ninety patients were treated with 73 transported to the hospital. On August 28th, the fire department was dispatched to a brush fire in the woods near 205 Madison Avenue. Due to the lack of rain, the fire grew large, and the New Jersey State Forest Service spotted it from their lookout tower. Two state forest, two state forest fire trucks were dispatched to assist. However, Madison firefighters were able to have the fire under control before they arrived. Several members of the Madison Fire Department EMS division were recently organized by Atlantic Health for their outstanding performance in identifying the early signs of a stroke. Their quick assessment, timely treatment, and rapid transport to the hospital strokes team directly contributed to four patients being discharged with only minor deficits. The honorees were Catherine Calabro recognized three times, Ryan Jakins, Brandon Romero Aguilar recognized two times, Christopher Hoffman, and Katie Ferrante. During the past month, the Fire Prevention Bureau conducted 49 fire inspectors in the borough. The Fire Prevention Bureau has also issued 13 fire permits. We also met with John Exman from the Madison Board of Education to re-inspect all schools before the start of the new year. We also tested the new fire systems and have been observing the fire drills at all schools." And now from the joint court, "When compared to caseload, Madison's caseload increased approximately 71% in August compared to August of '24. In addition, there was a slight decrease in the caseload compared to the previous month. The Madison Joint Municipal Court, including all four town police departments, had increased in caseload in August 2025 compared to last year. And as an additional note, all the current participating towns, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Morris, and Morris Township, have adopted resolutions to continue as members of the joint court when the current agreement ends in December of this year." Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Range.
Thank you. From the MEC tonight, the MEC gave away some 200 pollinator seedlings at the August 30th Farmers Market. These were grown by MEC's Joan Muscari, using seeds from her garden and the Madison Public Schools Pollinator Habitat at the Board of Education building. Joan used recycled pots, and when those ran out, she used biodegradable cowpots. Joan has grown and given away more than 1,400 plants in Madison since 2018, so we thank her for her continued service. And last Saturday, the MEC held a hugely successful eco-garden tour with 150 registrants. Ticket sales will fund an ongoing Nature Lovers speaker series in partnership with the Nature of Reading Bookshop. The nine location on this year, the nine locations on this year's tour included an energy-efficient house with a green roof and three secret gardens hidden behind fences and hedges. A native plant sale was held with Toad Shade Wildflower Farm and exhibitors including Blue Sky Green Earth Electric Landscaping, the Native Plant Society of New Jersey, the Great Swamp Watershed Association, and of course, the Nature of Reading Bookshop from here in Madison. And from the Department of Public Works tonight, a lot of ongoing services underway with the DPW, including pothole repair and pavement sealing. The mechanics have begun preparations for servicing the leaf collection equipment for the upcoming leaf season, the upcoming leaf season, which will be upon us before we know it. And the Parks Group continues to prepare fields for all the upcoming fall sports. Of note, the borough receives an award from the Morris County MUA in recognition of achieving a fifty percent or higher recycling rate. Fifty percent or more is the target recycling goal set by the state of New Jersey and the county's solid waste management plan. And of course, that award is because of the great work that our residents do in their residential recycling. So, we just get the, we just get the plaque to hang on the wall, but it's the whole community's effort that does that. Speaking of recycling and trash pickup, a reminder that twice a week, garbage collection ended on September sixth, and we will go into the fall and winter with once a week garbage collection through next May. Yard waste collection continues until December third, and yard waste bags are available at both the DPW garage and here in Hartley Dodge at the Clerk's Office. And curbside leaf collection, when they get those, that equipment all up and running, will begin on or about October thirteenth, depending on the weather and the leaves. And that is all from DPW tonight.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to cut back in line here and give the report for Finance and Borough The Tax Collector advises that the ad for tax sales has been posted and published in the Madison Eagle. Publishing this advertisement is one of the steps that is taken before a property owner's delinquency is resolved through a tax sale. Tax sale is the enforcement of collections against a property by placing a lien against the property for outstanding municipal charges that were due on or before December thirty-first of the prior year. Most of the notices in this advertisement were for unpaid utility bills. This year's tax sale is scheduled for ten AM this Thursday, September eleventh. In years past, most outstanding amounts are typically resolved before the actual tax sale. The state requires an annual tax sale to ensure municipalities do not have outstanding charges from prior years. The Finance Department has a few highlights on some of the larger and more important payments that appear on tonight's voucher register. There is, there's a payment of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars from the Open Space Trust Fund, which is for the MRC land and turf debt. One hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of that payment is principal on the land portion of the MRC, and eighty-five thousand dollars is principal on the turf field. The remaining twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars is the interest payment on the debt. Jim, those numbers don't add up. Oh, yes it does. They're very similar. Okay. As reported annually, we have principal payments on the turf field until the year twenty twenty-eight. The second notable payment is six million dollars, forty-six thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty cents, which is the monthly payment to the Board of Education for their share of property taxes. That payment was made on August fifteenth, and the next monthly payment will be made one week from today. Finally, on August fifteenth, the borough paid three million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars to the County of Morris, which is the third-quarter payment of county taxes that was collected by the Borough of Madison in our property tax bills. The council receives the voucher register, which is the bill list ahead of every council meeting, and the list is compiled by the Accounts Payable Department. It includes all payments that were processed and upcoming checks that are to be issued. Jim, I'm sorry for that, totally out of, no, that was, I'm sorry to put you on blast. I apologize. Okay, next we turn to Mr. Harold Lampoudas for utilities.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Ehrlich, and welcome to residents from the community. From the Water Department, we have a report of scheduling inspections and maintenance of chlorine gas monitoring systems with our water engineer, Ryan Fury. Inspections were done on two storage tanks, Madison Avenue and Midwood Terrace Storage Tanks. We marked out service for milling and paving on Green Village Road, which is a very big project. Water service topped one and a half inch for a new home being constructed on Midwood Terrace. And fire hydrant and water main flushing scheduled to begin towards the month's end. From the electric utility, I don't know exactly what transpired, but I got a report that a car took out a lamppost in the Cook Avenue parking lot. It was removed and still, a new light was installed, and somebody must have been trying to get in there, take advantage of a big sale. Lots of progress to report regarding our utility operations in other places around the borough. The solar carport at the MRC is now operational and generating electricity for our community. The next step is to pursue our tax benefits from the state and the direct payments from the federal government. We've also engaged Talva Engineering to start the planning and engineering work for another solar carport at the Madison Community Pool parking lot. Kudos to you, Jim, for getting that done. When did it actually go live, Jim?
Right.
Right, oh, so the meter's already turning? Right? It was kind of sunny yesterday, it was good.
[inaudible]
Awesome. Today was great for that. Thanks, Jim, thanks so much. The electric utility took possession of a new bucket truck, and rather than trade in an older bucket truck, we retained it and repositioned it with DPW, which gives us more flexibility to do capital repairs and projects in-house. The electric utility administrative staff has inputted all inventory into the new asset management software. The next step is to attach all the inventory with QR scannable codes to the appropriate stock position. This will make that department much more efficient to know exactly what their usage is and what they have in stock to prepare for anything in the borough comes across from electric utility needs. A firm named Dewberry Engineering has been hired to model our utility infrastructure to ensure that we have adequate sewer, water, and electric capacity to service future residential and commercial development. Their preliminary report indicates challenges regarding water and sewer service in certain areas of the borough. The next report will focus on the steps required to enhance our capacity and the cost to implement those improvements. That's all, Mayor Ehrlich.
Thank you, Councilman Honahan, Community Affairs.
Thank you. From the Downtown Development Commission, the next meeting will be held on Thursday, September eighteenth, at seven fifteen in Hartley Dodge. The Madison Farm and Artisan Market continues through December thirteenth, every Saturday between nine and two. Looking forward to the fiftieth year of Bottle Hill Day on Saturday, October fourth, which will also include the thirtieth happening of the Madison Car Show. The Chamber of Commerce invites you to an October tenth comedy night, which sold out last year and was really a great event. Also, to put on your calendars, October twenty-fifth is the Halloween Parade and Magic Show, and November first is the Rose City Dog Day Parade. And Madison Community Arts Center has a long list of things happening. Every second Wednesday is Music Open Night. Every third Wednesday is Comedy Open Mic. And a special shout-out for September nineteenth, Film Society of Summit will host Georgia O'Keefe the Brightness of Light documentary. Others can be found online.
Thank you. Councilman Harold Lampoudas, can I ask you to give the health report?
Yes, yes, definitely, Mayor Ehrlich. Hello, everybody, again. So, during the month of August, the Health Department completed the following. We followed up on twenty-six environmental complaints. We inspected twenty-three retail food establishments, investigated six reports of communicable disease, and administered seven immunizations to residents who are non-insured or underinsured. The New Jersey Department of Health is reporting an increased number of Culex species of mosquitoes in this region. The Culex mosquito is commonly found breeding close to homes in water that accumulates in bird baths, containers, and tarps, et cetera. The Culex mosquito is a concern because it is capable of transmitting West Nile virus along with other arboviruses. Mosquitoes can remain in the environment into early November, depending on the weather, and the department would like to remind residents to be diligent about preventing mosquito bites and mosquito breeding in the fall. The Health Department provides free school and sports physicals to any non-insured or underinsured child who is in need. To make an appointment, please email nourishing, nursing, sorry, nursing@westfieldnewjersey.com. That's nursing@westfieldnj.gov. Sorry, I misread it. Sorry about that. I think that's about all. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to communications and petitions. Any received?
None received, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have our first of two invitations for public comment. The second public comment period will follow our ordinances for hearing. We have no agenda discussion tonight, so at this time, you are limited to commenting on the following resolutions. Resolution R. two forty dash twenty twenty-five, authorizing execution of an agreement for the participation in the Joint Municipal Court of Madison Borough, Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, and Morris Township. Resolution two forty-one, resolution of the Borough of Madison granting permission to the New Jersey Historical Commission to install a historic marker at the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. This is a historical marker to recognize Madison's barber shop protests, a series of nineteen sixty-four civil rights protests by Drew University students against the local barber shops' whites-only policy. This marker will be part of the state Black Heritage Trail, which highlights sites that connect the stories of Black life and resiliency and celebrate Black culture. Resolution two forty-two of the Borough of Madison amending the Borough Madison Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual. These are minor adjustments that we are making to remain in compliance with our joint insurance fund. Resolution two forty-three of the Borough of Madison authorizing the fortieth annual Geralda Farms Run on Sunday, November ninth. Resolution two forty-four authorizing shared service agreement with Saint Vincent Martyr School, Church School, to provide a special law enforcement officer, category three. Resolution two forty-five of the Borough of Madison appointing Debbie Kosadakis to the position of crossing guard. And resolution two forty-six of the Borough of Madison appointing school crossing guards for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Resolution two forty-seven of the Borough of Madison approving raffle license applications submitted by the Madison Rotary Club Foundation. Resolution two forty-eight of the Borough of Madison approving raffles license, license applications submitted by Hickory Tree Chorus. Resolution two forty-nine of the Borough of Madison approving raffle license applications submitted by the PTO of Torrey J. Sabatini School. Resolution two fifty of the Borough of Madison authorizing expenditure from the Open Space Trust Fund for continued habitat restoration at the Madison Recreation and Conservation Complex, or MRCC. This is in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. It covers fence repair, invasive plant control, as well as new pollinator and tree plantings. Resolution two fifty-one, the Borough of Madison authorizing expenditure from the Open Space Trust Fund for installation of additional fencing around the Dodge Field Playground. This is in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Resolution two fifty-two of the Borough of Madison ratifying the appointment of Thomas Dianis as part-time unpaid intern for the Borough of Madison Fire Department. Resolution two fifty-three, authorizing temporary closure of the northbound lane of Waverly Place for the Lafayette Trail marker placement. Resolution two fifty-four of the Borough of Madison authorizing change order and final payment to Dascal LLC in the amount of four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-one cents for the Madison Public Library Interior Renovations Construction Project. Resolution two fifty-five has been withdrawn. Resolution two fifty-six of the Borough of Madison authorizing purchase of a Public Works Department vehicle under the Educational Services Commission co-op. This is in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and, one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars to fit out a dump truck. And resolution two fifty-seven of the Borough authorizing purchase of a Public Works Department vehicle under Educational Services Commission co-op in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars to fit out a Mason truck, which is a smaller dump truck. Resolution two fifty-eight of the Borough of Madison authorizing the settlement of certain tax appeals. And resolution two fifty-nine of the Borough of Madison authorizing the settlement of certain tax appeals. So, those are the items you may comment on. They'll be also a part of the consent agenda, which we will vote on at the end of the meeting. Anyone wishing to comment on any of these resolutions, please step forward. State your name and address. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we will give you a one-minute grace period. During this period, we'll capture all the comments and respond at the end of the period. Hello, Mike?
Posted yet, but I just wanted to give my thoughts on it.
Excuse me, Mr. Martinez? We'll have an individual hearing for each ordinance as it's called up for hearing.
All right, so then on resolutions two fifty-eight and two fifty-nine, you know, this, as I was reading it, it sounds to me like, you know, I've got more questions, and I'm a little concerned going through it, so I would just, I would love a discussion on those two things. As it reads to me, it sounds like we've got a five million dollar sort of aggregate refund that we're, that is due out for years twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen-ish to a Geralda Farms owner. So, where's that money going to come from? You know, my understanding, when it comes to, you know, after-the-fact rebates, you know, the municipality's sort of on the hook for, for that because we've already paid county, we've already paid sort of the school taxes, so the five million dollars, like, where's that going to come from? And then it also sounds, starting next year, for the next number of years, there's a five million dollar reduction in what this property owner owes to us. So, in the absence of more information, it's, it's a lot of money. We, you know, we only collect seventy-five million dollars in property taxes, so that's a pretty big chunk, so we'd love a discussion on that.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. So, we do have a tax appeal reserve fund, from which a payment would be made. But I would ask Mr. Cody to please tell us a little bit more about how this fits into the overall agreement.
The appeals in question go back to twenty eighteen, and the property was originally owned for the first three years of the tax appeals that are under in question. It was owned by a MacCallie Company, and then in twenty twenty-one, the Bergman family purchased the property and enhanced the building with significant capital improvements recently, and the building is now fully occupied. The advice from our tax appeal counsel and our assessor was that the exposure to the borough was approximately, potentially, eight hundred thousand dollars for the period when the building was not fully occupied and was not generating sufficient income to justify the assessment that was on the property. The values had been established for that property in twenty thirteen through our last revale, and were not reflective of the downturn in the commercial market at Geralda. So, we were assessing at a high value, collecting taxes at a higher value than potentially the market value on the income approach would support. So, the recommendation from our tax appeal counsel was to try to negotiate a settlement. We had a series of meetings with Mr. Bergman and his family, and were able to negotiate that settlement, with the understanding that the twenty twenty-six appeal value is what's known as a standalone value, and it's not subject to what's called the Fries Act, so that, we're not locked in on that value. Normally, when you settle, it's locked in for an additional two-year period. So, what we're able to do as part of the negotiations is to now reposition the building now that it's ninety-eight percent occupied, and is probably the most, the highest occupied building at Geralda, and is doing very well, because three large law firms just moved in, Riker Danzig, Kelly Dry, and Saber Schlesinger. We're able to, because of those fit-outs, have what's called an assessor's appeal, which will be filed in January of twenty twenty-six, to bring the values back up, to recoup the funds that we're paying. The estimate of the cash refund here will be approximately four hundred thousand dollars, which is, was the advice of our legal counsel, that we did not have a strong case because of, if you don't have income to support the value, we weren't going anywhere on the appeal, and we had an exposure of almost an additional six hundred thousand dollars. That's the reason it was settled. But we think we're going to do much better in the out-years, and as we head to revale in twenty seventeen to go be effective in twenty-eight, we believe we will fully capture the value, and they'll be back up to traditional values that they were years ago when they were assessed at a much higher value. That's a long answer to a short question.
I was going to say, the fact that you have command of all those details is very impressive. Thank you, Ray. Okay. We now move on to the ordinances for hearing. We now move on to the ordinances for hearing. Oh, no, I have to close the comment period. If there's no one else wishing to comment, I close this part of the meeting. We have no agenda discussions, so we will have ordinances for hearing. Could the clerk read, please read the statement?
Yes. The ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on the first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on August 11, 2025. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting seen.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 37-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $2,062 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of bulletproof vests for the police department.
I now open the hearing for ordinance 37-2025. Is there anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move ordinance 37-2025, second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell and Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 37-2025 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 38-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $200,000 from the Electric Utility Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of utility meters and accessories.
I now open the hearing for ordinance 38-2025. Seeing no one commenting, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 38-2025. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote. Oh, Tom, please, go ahead.
I think, Lizra, you said that it's only for $200,000. It says $250,000.
Is $250 in the title? Is that, that's the correct title?
Is it only $200,000?
The ordinance says $250 as well. The body of ordinance says $250, at least, the copy that's in our packet.
Tom was just mentioning that when you read it, you said $200,000.
Oh, I thought I said $250. I'll read it again. I can read it again, if you'd like, for the record.
That's okay. I think we can, we can all agree it's $250,000.
So can I ask a question to Jim, if you know the answer? So, are we doing more upgrades? Because we finished upgrades in the community already, right? Or almost finished? Oh, are we doing more upgrades now, Jim, on water meters and changeouts?
This is for electric meters?
I mean, electric, excuse me. Sorry.
They're tough to get, and we're anticipating some development coming down the road, something that's already been in front of the planning board. And we have an opportunity to buy our style meter for a newer one that costs more money that comes out, so we're going to do that.
Okay. Add it to the inventory.
Yeah, and we need the inventory, correct.
Perfect. Okay, thanks for the explanation, Jim.
Sounds prudent. Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell and Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 38-2025 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Okay, we now move on to the invitation for public comment. We invite the public to comment on any topic, and again, the same rules apply. Anyone wishing to comment on any topic, please step forward and state your name and address. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we'll give you a one-minute grace period. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Welcome.
So I just wanted to quickly talk about canopy trees, and I know we all in this room know how important canopy trees are to Madison in terms of climate resilience and biodiversity and many other things. But in particular, oaks and hickories are nut trees, and there are others, are super important. In fact, Rutgers considers these trees some of the top priority trees for us to plant. And there are many reasons. I mean, acorns and hickory nuts are really dense nutrient food for wildlife, and they extend on into the fall, you know, when food becomes scarce. Oaks and hickories support a high number of caterpillars and pollinators. Oaks are over 500, hickory is about 200, so lots of wildlife there. And as canopy trees, they cool our air, they purify our air, and not just under the canopy, right? Studies have shown within a 10-minute walk of a forested area, the temperature can be six degrees cooler. And finally, they have really deep tap roofs, so it helps get the water into our Buried Valley aquifer, right? It's like a little highway system bringing the water there, so that's really important. So they do a lot, but they struggle to get regenerated. You know, in yards, a lot of people don't want their, to have nut trees all the time because it's messy. Or if they do have an oak tree, landscapers might sweep away all those acorns that could become little baby oaks one day. And when a little oak or a hickory does sprout, many times it is weeded. And even in parks and woodlands, there are challenges, right? There are invasive plants like a Japanese barberry, which will take over the forest floor, will change the chemical makeup of the soil, and kind of hog up all the resources, the light, the water from, from these tree saplings. And of course, there's the deer. And deer are very dense, we have an overabundance of deer, and while they're cute, they are everywhere, and they eat eight pounds of vegetation a day, so they're very hungry. And so when they see all these lovely tree saplings, they, they like to munch on them, and that makes it hard for them to regenerate.
One more minute.
Now, in the Drew Forest and the Madison Recreation Conservation Complex, invasives are controlled, and the deer are managed. We have deer exposure fences, and so that helps give these saplings a chance to regenerate. And regenerated, naturally regenerated saplings are much more robust than something you get from a canopy because it just grew up there from, you know, a tiny tree, and it's also more cost-effective than buying a tree. So by maintaining deer fences and continuing with restoration work, both at the Drew Forest and at the Madison Recreation Forest, our tree regeneration in Madison is strengthened, and also other native canopy shrubs and flowers can also thrive. So I'm really appreciative that the council, the mayor, everyone has been so supportive of these areas because it's been really fulfilling to see these forests get healthier and healthier and support our community with all the things that trees and wildlife do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kirsten. We do have that resolution tonight appropriating $75,000 to protect and enhance our forest at the Madison Recreation Complex. Thanks for that great reminder.
Hey, guys. Mike Martinez, Five Independence. Thank you, Ray, for clarifying that. I read that quickly, and I was reading the numbers as assessed taxes, not assessed value, so that's my bad. I appreciate you clarifying and bringing my heart rate down. It's like, it's a lot of money, guys. But thank you for that. It was, it was very impressive hearing you go through it. So the two things I wanted to talk on were both sort of positive. So on the, on the filming thing, one of my favorite experiences from this past summer was when Netflix was filming, I think, The Other Brother in Town. They were over on East Lane or West Lane, so I went over with my daughters to watch it. Tom, I didn't see you there. But, you know, my kids got to meet John Cena, I got to meet John Cena. I'm not sure who was more excited, but it was a great experience. And I know this is a big thing in New Jersey of getting more Hollywood films being filmed here. I think it's a great thing for the community. We'll love to see more of it. If the town can make money, if residents can make money by renting out their homes, I think it's a good thing for all, so love it. Thank you for, you know, facilitating that. And then the second thing I want to give a shout out to is the PBA. So this past weekend, they hosted the carnival for the second year in a row. It was just a phenomenal community event. My kids loved going. We were there for a long time, saw a lot of neighbors, saw a lot of friends. And, you know, I know it takes a lot of time and effort to plan something like that, and they did it to a T. So thank you to the PBA, thank you to anywhere for hosting it. It takes a lot to bring that onto your own property, and they had the perfect property for it, so thank you to them. And I think the best, the best part of it is, you know, when you go to these carnivals, you go down the shore, you go to the boardwalk, like, you know, it's kind of annoying dealing with the people that work there sometimes. This is, this is our police officers. They did an awesome job. It was great to see them in action. It was great to see them in a different light. I know we talk about community policing a lot, and I couldn't think of a better, you know, way to facilitate that. So to the PBA, to the police department, thank you very much.
Thank you for those great comments. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward. Welcome, Mark.
I reside at 49 Prospect Street, Madison. I'm here to talk briefly about rooftop residential solar energy in 2005 and 2006, I guess with the emphasis on 2006. I have residential solar on my house. It's been on the home for about five years. And over the last few years, I've gotten to know Peter Fried, who you all know is a very active supporter of environment and sustainability. And recently, we were back in touch after we learned about federal changes to solar rebates and solar support, and we've decided that we need to speak up about this issue because we feel that it's important. And so Peter has really been the guiding person behind this effort, and he, we have formed an organization which is called Madison Solar, which is a support group designed to help people who have solar panels, you know, maintain them, but also, more importantly, to encourage other households in, in Madison to adopt solar. So I want to talk about the status quo for a minute and then talk about what I think are some of the positives that we still have to look forward to. I guess the first thing to keep in mind is that the solar federal credit was 25% of the value of a solar system, and it's now basically gone as of January 1st of next year. That's a big reduction in the economics of, of solar energy. By the way, I have notes that I'm going to hand out to each of you so that you don't have to take any, that I'll give you a copy of this. That results in a significant drop in the return on investment in solar panels from about 11.5% today to about 7.5% beginning in, in next year. So you can see that the economic benefit to a home, a family that invests in solar is going to go down very significantly. The good news is that the New Jersey BPU rebate, which runs for 15 years, will continue, and the net crediting of your solar energy from the Madison Utility Company will continue. But it's also important to know that each one of these installations is a, basically a retail transaction. It's expensive to put them up, and although the cost is coming down, it's difficult to avoid, you know, those costs. I think the bottom line is that public leadership on this issue is now going to shift from the federal level to the state and, and local level because the federal government has essentially withdrawn from supporting this effort. And I think Madison's role is very unique because you have your own utility company, and so you're in a position to speak out on this issue, which I'm hoping that you will do. Now, the good news is that there's still a positive return of 7.5%. The investment pays off for the homeowner after about 12 years, which is about halfway through the 25-year useful life of the system. And rooftops are really the optimal place to put solar energy because they fit very well into the built environment, land use patterns, and so on. I'll jump past a few of these notes. There are lots of other really good benefits to having solar energy, and, and we think that there will continue to be a desire on the part of homeowners to have this. However, that drop in the economic value really changes the equation, and so what we're encouraging is more of an effort on the part of the borough and the residents to recruit other Madison families to put solar on, on their homes. We know that the utility company would like to at least double the number of panels from 115 installations today. That would increase the number of households as a percentage from 2% to 4%. And we know that operating costs are coming down. We know that installation costs are coming down, so there are some positive things on the horizon, but we need to have more effort in the town to keep up the pace on creating more solar.
Mark, that's, that's time. I'm sorry to, to interrupt. I would like to hear you speak about solar for much longer, but that's our four-minute limit, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Well, anyway, what we're encouraging you to do is speak up to all your neighbors and be leaders on this issue in the borough because we're not going to get the leadership from other sources. We have to do it ourselves. And we'd also like you to all come to our kickoff meeting, which is on October 20th. It's going to be at Rose Hall, where we're going to invite all folks who have solar or are interested to learn about it.
Mark, I have to ask you to wrap up, I'm sorry, just to be fair to everybody.
They'll, they'll increase the number of systems in Madison. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. We are lucky indeed to have passionate volunteers and great leadership in the borough so that we can continue to lead on solar despite the shortcomings at the federal level. Thanks for your comments. Okay, we now move on to the introduction of ordinances. Will the borough, will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Wednesday, September the 24th. Will be posted in the Madison Eagle, published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available. Members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinance by title. Ordinance 39-2025?
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter 190 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Water to authorize the revision of the Borough of Madison's water rates and service fees.
I move ordinance 39-25. Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell and Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Ordinance 40-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $26,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of new automated license plate reader, computer hardware installation for the park enforcement vehicle.
I move ordinance.
Parking enforcement.
I move ordinance 40-2025. Second.
And this is to upgrade the software in the parking enforcement vehicle, which we understand that computer is reaching obsolescence, and we want to make sure it is improved and upgraded before the end of that software's life. Any other council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell and Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Ordinance 41-2025.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, amending chapter 98 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Filming to Regulate Commercial Filming in the Borough of Madison.
I move ordinance 41-2025. Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harrell and Pootis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move consented general resolution 40, 240-2025 through 254-2025, and 256-2025 through 259-2025, with 255-2025 being taken out. Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be removed? Councilman Honahan?
Yes. Just a couple of comments on Resolution 250, which is open space funds to continue the work that Kirsten sadly left, but she's really adopted the MRCC Forest, and that will provide funds over the next three years for expenses for deer fencing, invasives, control, and trails signage, and community programs. But they also did a lot of work to make sure they're partnering with other committees in town, so 20% of that is in-kind and matching with gifts of funds from different groups like the Community Garden, as well as Shade Tree donating trees, the Garden Club donating plants, and high school, and other volunteer. volunteers giving time. So they did a great job making sure that that's a community project.
That's terrific. Thank you.
And then just on Resolution 251, also from the Open Space Trust Fund, this is to extend a small portion of fencing to ensure that we are meeting the requirements of the grant that we received. By spending $15,000, we get over $500,000 back, so I strongly support that.
Thank you. Mr. Alan Poudis?
So I'd like to just comment and compliment St. Vincent Marty School for bringing a security resource officer into their facility. It's, I mean, it's a necessary safety net for the schools, and I know that the Madison Police Department has done a very good job working with the SROs and including them as part of the police force. So we feel much safer about our students there, also in addition to the Madison Public Schools. Also, I guess we have to give more kudos to the fire chief, Wickman. He is getting another volunteer fireman. Is that what I read here? Yep. Unpaid intern, so who knows where that'll lead, but the fact that he's continuing to recruit, we couldn't recruit a couple of years ago, is a great sign for his outreach to the community. And that's all. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment?
May I?
Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harold L. Poudis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
Okay, there is no unfinished business. We move on to the approval of the vouchers.
From the current fund, $9,719,816.81. From the General Capital Fund, $58,539.76. From the Electric Operating Fund, $967,305.24. From the Electric Capital Fund, $847,109.09. From the Water Operating Fund, $68,182.10. From the Trusts, $302,940.19. The total's
I'll move the approval of the vouchers. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Range?
Yes.
Mr. Harold L. Poudis?
Yes.
Ms. Honahan?
Yes.
There is no new business, and so may I have moved the motion to adjourn?
Acting Mayor Erlich, I move to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.